Good evening, LaPorte County. I'd like to call to order the LaPorte County Commissioners' meeting for Wednesday, July 21st, to discuss LaPorte County business. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Gary Radke, would you please start us off? Thank you, be seated. Roll call, please. Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Rosinski.
Present.
Officer Commissioners, present. I'd like to consider the agenda.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consider approval of July 7th, 2021, minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consideration claims.
Commissioners, we have payroll for the period ending July 16th, 2021, in the amount of $1,166,460.46, and operating expense claims in the amount of $3,088,257.20.
Motion to...
Mr. President, I move to approve claims as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is public comment. Anyone from the public who would like to talk, present your case here, and keep in mind the rules that we have established for such.
I'm Randy Beach, 4177 West Schultz Road, LaPorte, Indiana. After reading tonight's agenda, I did not notice any follow-up from Mr. Haney and the task given him by Mr. Rosinski a couple of weeks ago. I did go looking back at my own records and found that on Wednesday, August 3rd, 2016, that Commissioner Cora moved to approve, and it was seconded by Commissioner Bohaczek -- thank you -- approved by Mr. Bohaczek for the posting of weight limit signs in and around our neighborhood. I was driving around my house 30 minutes later after the meeting. Signs were already posted for 12-ton weight limits. For a year, year and a half, we were led to believe that our sheriff's deputies were not capable of pulling over a truck because of the skill level needed to determine an overweight truck. After getting tired of hearing this, we, the neighborhood, started asking why deputies, knowing that a triaxal truck emptied weight is over 12,000 pounds. Could they not just ask for the driver's license and registration, which shows the vehicle is overweight and enough to give a ticket? A few days later, around March 6th, 2018, one of the neighbors sees a county employee removing weight limit signs. When questioned, the county employee says his boss instructed him to remove them. When specifically asked if the decision came from the county commissioner, he said, quote, "Yes, they're trying something new." This was questioned but never answered by anyone. Speed forward to the July 17th meeting. Ms. Mathias, thankfully, asked the commissioners if they could do anything to help. Up came Mr. Haney's challenge. At some point in tonight's meeting, I'd love to hear Mr. Haney's findings. Now, back to my comments in the July meeting regarding the paperwork being filled out, signed, turned into the state with less-than-truthful statements by other county entities. I asked then, and I'll ask again, who is my go-to personnel within the county government that will treat my information request as an interested party? This should not be an attorney hired by me. This should be like a whistleblower personnel, making sure county employees are not doing things to undermine the LaPorte County joint zoning ordinance. The ordinance is written in a very precise language. It has language and terminology that is solved by the common man. It does not require a law degree to oversee. If we do not presently have such an employee, when are you looking to hire one? From what we have been seeing and hearing lately at these meetings, we have some questionable happenings going on in around LaPorte County politics. There's not room in this for the joint zoning ordinance to be questioned. It is a written rule of the land. It should be followed as written. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to just make a comment.
Well, it's not a discussion.
No, it's not a discussion, but I'd like to make a comment in regards to what Mr. Beach said about what I was tasked with. I did make a couple of phone calls to Mr. Beach over the past two weeks. He's got very specific windows in which I can call him in at his work. I called and I left messages for him. We did engage back and forth in messaging back and forth, in which I explained to him initially for the first week that the county superintendent was on vacation. The second week, I did follow up with him, and we exchanged messages back and forth again, in which I relayed to him that the county superintendent was not the prior superintendent when this was pulled down. He didn't have definitive information for me on precisely who it came from, from the commission to remove the -- to have the signs removed. So I just want to make sure it's clear that I did reach out several times to Mr. Beach, and we did engage in emails back and forth regarding this subject. I gave him all the information that I had that was available from the Highway Department about this. Again, I wasn't on the commission at that point, and our highway superintendent was not superintendent at the time that those signs came down. The best that I can tell you is that the prior commission authorized the prior superintendent to remove it. Exactly who made that, I am not 100% sure. So, thank you.
Mr. President, if I could supplement perhaps with Mr. Haney's indication. I've spoken to Laura Nierenberg of my office. She's the associate who was involved in the overweight truck ordinance drafting. She's also worked closely with Deputy Ryan Elcock, and I believe they're making inquiries as well to the Highway Department to talk again about reposting of signs on both Schultz Road and 400 West, which I believe is the area inquired of. The posting of signs does assist the enforcement of the overweight truck ordinance, which you all have passed, and so hopefully we'll have a further report at the next meeting about the reposting of signs out there as requested by the commission. Yeah, I had a discussion with some folks this week about that. I would suggest that if we're going to post weight limit signs, that we don't do it just in one area where we have a perceived problem, that we do it throughout the county. Agreed. Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Step forward and -- hmm, nobody. Be shy. Anybody on Zoom for public comment? Going once. Nobody wants to come to our meeting and look us in the eye and tell us their thoughts? I'll be darned. Okay, public comment is now closed. We'll move on to department head comments and reports. Any department heads? Everybody wants to get out and enjoy the weather, I bet. Any department heads on Zoom? Tony's going to give us a brief?
Good evening, Commissioners.
A brief?
It is a beautiful evening this evening, and I --
Oh, Amanda.
-- in the spirit of brevity.
Okay. I'll get you next, Amanda.
Was wanting to take a moment to introduce our newest team member in the Community and Economic Development Office, who's with us here this evening, Ms. Viviana Plaza, our new community development specialist. So if any of the department heads here this evening or fellow team members from the county receive a call with regard to the county's website, specifically the Super Users Group, Viviana's working on behalf of the department aggressively to make our county's website its very best. And just wanted to let the commissioners know, I've circulated a summary of activity. Happy to answer any questions. We're extremely busy and very productive day today at the Chicago's Rail Summit with a large number of corporations and the Tier 1 railroads that serve our now much more and continually building and populating Kingsbury Industrial Park. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that mention that you were at the Rail Summit. That's very important that we do. We are definitely, I know, front and center with KOP. While you were doing that, Mr. Seitz has been amazing doing his R&amp;E visits to a day.
Fabulous.
Fabulous. And Randy Novak and myself and Joe Cora were meeting with a prospective person today also for a big project. So we are all about economic development. LaPorte County is hiring, and we're moving forward. So thank you for your part on that. And had the chance to meet with Viviana. She seems like a very nice person, anxious to get her to work. Even though she went to Purdue and not IU, well, it's okay. It's okay. We're going to give her a chance, so thank you.
Well, Purdue Northwest is our local university, so we are very proud that we have a PNW grad right here in LaPorte County helping us expand our office of Community and Economic Development Works. So welcome, Viviana.
Yes, indeed.
You'll find it a great team to work with.
We greatly appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, if there's no more -- oh, wait, we have Amanda, sorry.
Yes, Amanda.
It's all yours.
Thank you, good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to update you briefly. I haven't been able to update you for a bit on vaccination numbers. So the county, we have given our 30,000 dose last week at our vaccine clinic. LaPorte County itself is at 51.6% fully vaccinated. We are ahead of the state average. The state is exactly 50%. So we're a little bit ahead that way. Our vaccine clinic is still open Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays four days a week at the old LaPorte Hospital. We are in the lobby. And starting August 1st, we're going to be cutting back hours a little bit. We'll be closing down on Fridays, so we'll be out there Mondays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays. And if you have any questions, I'll take them, but thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Doing a great job.
Thanks, Amanda.
Any other department heads on Zoom? Seeing none, and seeing none here. We'll move on to request, consider permission to approach council not to exceed $650,000 from ARP funds for disaster recovery site in South Bend. Darlene, head, hail IT.
Hi. I'm just requesting permission to approach county council to be able to set up a disaster recovery site over in South Bend at Union Station. It's a data center, big data center. This amount includes -- so what it is, is our hardware, we'll own the hardware over there, where -- and we'll own -- we have five years rental included on this.
Wow.
So that, you know, if something happens in our building or Michigan City Courthouse, you know, where we're not able to access our buildings, we could actually run from that remote site. A bit slower, but it would not, you know, shut.
But it's a backup.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President, I move to approve giving permission to IT Department to approach the council for disaster recovery site for IT.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Darlene. Next, we have consider permission to approach the council for ARP funds. Barb Houston, E911.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here this evening representing LaPorte County essential workers in a consideration for ARP funds. I read through this pamphlet put out by the Department of Treasury. Not close enough?
Is that on?
Yes, it is on.
Okay. Just got to get a little closer.
Put out by the Department of Treasury, and it's 151 pages. I found it to be repetitious and boring. And then I received this. It's the overview. It's also from the Department of the Treasury, and it is the final rule, guidance for state and local fiscal recovery funds, and it's 35 pages, and I call this Cliff Notes, basically. And in here, both pamphlets say the same thing. And it describes an eligible worker. Workers needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential, critical infrastructure sectors, including emergency response, E911, sheriff, EMS, community corrections, juvenile services, IT, maintenance highway, maintenance highway department, EMA, and hazmat. And the essential work it describes is work that is not performed while telework hitting from a residence and involves regular in-person interactions with patients, the public, or That's all very easy to say, but did you ever think what that actually entails? We'll start with 911. What if the 911 department didn't come to work? They didn't show up for work. Nobody did. Emergency services in LaPorte County would be at a standstill. No one would be dispatched. And it's not like everybody now dials 911 for any kind of an emergency, and that's what we're going to do. With 911 not coming to work, that means that nobody gets dispatched. And if you live in the county and you have volunteer fire departments and your house catches on fire, you have to call 911. 911 doesn't answer, so you think, who am I going to call to get a fire truck here to put out this fire? Well, by the time you think, well, maybe Joe will know, so I'll call him, and Joe doesn't answer, so you think, well, I'll call somebody else, and they don't answer, by this time, your house is in shambles and burnt to the ground. 911 does more than just answer phone calls. As last year, even during the pandemic, they answered 166,000 calls that came into the center and 114,000 that were dispatched. The workers in the 911 center, they're EMD certified, NIMS, which is National Incident Management System certified, certified for NCIC and IDAX. They enter warrants, they confirm and clear the warrants, they do background checks, they run triple I and criminal history for prosecutors, probation, and work release. And this is all outside the realm of fire and EMS. Then we have the sheriff's department. The sheriff has technically skilled professionals. They are here to serve and protect. Their duties are to make arrests. And if you watch television, most of the bad guys, for lack of a better use, wear masks. Last year, everybody had a mask on. So knowing the good from the bad was not as easy as it, unless, of course, they had a gun, then it was quite easy. But at the same time, with everybody wearing masks, they also had to acknowledge six-foot social distancing. Well, when you're trying to arrest someone, how do you do six-foot social distancing when you want to cuff somebody? Throw the cuffs at him and say, hey, put these on? Well, that can't be done either. So you can't do six feet in the back of a squad car either as far as social distancing is concerned. And so if none of these people came to work, then protect and serve, we'd be in trouble. Also, you could, you know, push comes to shove, you could take somebody off the street, which wouldn't be a good idea. Put him in a squad car and give him a gun and tell him to go out and protect and serve the public. Not a good idea. You probably wouldn't want the outcome, and insurance would go through the roof, obviously. You know, the jail is another place. I've never been in the jail, so I went in the jail today to see what do the jailers do. And of course, the sheriff came in at the time, and he said, so you already turned yourself in. And I said, well, yes, I did. So I got a really nice walk through the jail by Sergeant John Wiltshire. And I was really not surprised, but I was really impressed with what they do do. In the jail, the inmates get three meals a day, and it's not just three straight meals a day. They do for diabetics, for religious orders. If there's problems, there's allergies that are taken into consideration. They also have safe housing, they are clothing, they have counselors, they have 24-hour medical. And currently, there's over 200 inmates in the jail. Over 200. But what if they didn't come to work? All of that would stop. When COVID hit down in the intake center, they started doing testing. If you tested positive, you were quarantined. If you tested negative, you went to a different area. At that same time, the inmates, who usually do the laundry and help with the cooking and everything, that was all halted. So the officers took on that duty. The officers actually did the cooking, the laundry, and the dishes, and they weren't real happy when the dishwasher went out. The inmates, if none of those people came to work, the inmates would be in lockdown. That means no food, nothing. Pretty much all they could do is go to the bathroom and wash their hands. That's the jail personnel. Now we have EMS, highly skilled. They are first to come in contact with patients, and they never hesitate. The 911 center would tell them if the possibility exists of COVID exposure, and they would take normal precautions, still combat against a germ that we aren't sure how any of us, even at that time, came in contact with or could get. Our IT department, Darlene's people. We all work with computers, some of us better than others, and we all have iPads and laptops and iPhones, and we all know how to do all those things. We can email, look up, text, buy goods, pay bills, write reports, charts, et cetera. And then your computer freezes, or the screen goes black, or you delete something you didn't mean to do. And who do we call? LaPorte County runs on computers. Everybody does. Cars, everything. So we always call on IT, and they know how to fix the problem, or they know who to call. And they're on call 24 hours a day for LaPorte County at any maintenance that needs to be done. And then we have our maintenance department. They are the unseen workers. You pass them every day in the hall, and you don't really see them. They're there, they're quiet, they do their job, they mop the floors, they dust, they keep everything clean, and they came to work every day disinfecting and cleaning and making our workplace safe. And they cannot work from home. Congresswoman Connie Gromerosa asked three questions. First one was, why wasn't hazmat and EMA put on the list of names that I gave to you? Well, unfortunately, it's my fault. Out of sight, out of mind. I never see Jeff Hamilton. I didn't even know until yesterday where his office was, which I understand is out at the sheriff's garage. And the other was EMA, and again, out of sight, out of mind. I never, you know, see them, don't walk past their office or anything, so my fault again. And that was one of the questions. Why wasn't she? Why weren't they put on the thing? The second reason was, why is Barb Houston doing this? Well, basically, I wasn't here last year, so I have no skin in the game. I'm here for the people. And I've been, all of my adult life, I have been living in LaPorte County, except for those few years I went to Florida. All of my adult working life, I have worked for LaPorte County Government. At one time or another, I probably knew half the people in this county. I know Sheriff John Boyd, I knew him when he was a patrolman. Andrew McGuire, he was one of my students at one time. He always sat in the back of the room with his arms folded and never took a note and passed the class with flying colors. My assistant, Matt Deckard, I knew his mother, his father, and his grandfather. So basically, all of these people are like family, and that's why, since I have nothing to gain from this, I'm coming forward to ask, talk for this group. I originally planned to come forward for the 911 center. This has been my thought all along, but then I talked with Carl Sender, and he said, Barb, if you're going to do this, come as a group. So I contacted the sheriff and Andrew and other department heads, and instead of all of us, we all pretty much had the same idea, but instead of all of us coming separately, I said I would speak for the group, and they agreed, and I'm very pleased with that. Question number three from Congresswoman Gromerosa was, am I going to run for office? I said, no, I'm not. At one time, I thought about running for lieutenant governor, but Tom said he'd never move again, so that would entail a move to Indianapolis, so that's out of the question. All of these essential workers that I've talked about today and others have come to work every day. They are dedicated workers, keeping the continuity of LaPorte County Government moving forward. And what I'm asking for is a portion of the ARP money to LaPorte County Government essential employees, as much as possible, plus 5%. Thank you. Any questions?
Actually, what you're asking us for is permission to repeat that whole thing to the council, because they'll have to make the decision. We can make a decision to send you to the council.
Yes, please.
And I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. President, I think Barb's got some really great points, and certainly there's no one, I believe, here in this room that would disagree with anything you said. We've got an awful lot of amazing people who work for the county and who kept us running through a historically dangerous and crisis-ridden time. I think that the council would be wise to look at this, but also to consider perhaps a broader approach. We have been hearing over the last three, four months that we're losing extremely well-trained, highly skilled employees for better pay in other places. IT has lost people. EMS has lost people. Every time we train a person up to the maximum that we train them, they are taking all that training and all those dollars and walking out the door to a better-paying job where they come to another community or another organization, extremely well-trained on the backs of the taxpayer dollars in LaPorte County. So we are really being foolish, and I would challenge, the financial arm of our county is the county council, and I would challenge them to look at your proposal and the salary issue so that we can make sure we're preserving the talent that we have in this county, because that, you know, if you don't take care of your employees, you might as well hang up your shingle, because it's just not, it's money, throwing good money after bad. And so Mr. Novak's in the room. I won't put him on the spot, but that would be our challenge. I would say that we send this to the council, but we also send it with a recommendation tacked on that they look at the salaries in a cohesive and inclusive way.
I agree with you 100%. I've also lost two, recently lost two employees. Just starting, she'll make $6,000 more in Porter County than she would make with me. So it's very difficult to keep employees. Just about the time I was down five, and now with two more leaving, we did replace a couple, but then with two more leaving, we're down again.
Yeah.
And still interviewing, and hopefully we'll be able to gain. But yes, we do need to address the problem of salaries in LaPorte County for all employees, and I know they're trying. I do. I really do believe they are trying. And this money here is separate from what the county would be able, you can't use this for salaries, but I think, you know, salaries are very needed.
Present your motion.
So my motion was to, you know, grant permission for Barb to go ahead and go to the council and make her proposal, with the addendum that we request that the council consider the opportunity to do an all-inclusive study of the finances for our employees, salaried and hourly employees, so that we ensure that, you know, the ARP money, while it may not be specifically for salaries, there are ways that we can reimburse some of our accounts, as Carl Sender has begun to analyze. And I think that that would be something that would include all of our employees, because while the essential workers that you spoke of, you even mentioned some that you had not put on the list, I think that there's a lot of essential workers out there who have kept our county going, and we need to really look at this as a whole operation.
So we have a motion?
I have a quick question, Ms. Houston. Could you repeat that last line, because it's a little different than what I see here and what was originally in our package, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. One second, please. Asking for a portion of ARP money to LaPorte County Government essential employees, as much as possible, plus 5%.
And so a portion of the, and plus 5% add-on to the salary, or?
No, for the ARP money, plus 5%. 5% raise, of course, would be excellent, too.
Sure. Right, so I'm just trying to see how that translates, because I see here a dollar amount of $10,000 on the paperwork, that's why I was curious.
That's not what I'm asking for anymore. I would like to leave it up to the council, if they could, provide us with ARP money. Like Commissioner Mathias says, we have a lot of good employees here.
Absolutely.
The employees, the departments that I'm The employees, the departments that I mentioned are, I don't want to say special, but they are. They're separate. I mean, they, they put their lives on the line, they dispatch, they oversee, they are essential employees that work and come to work every day. They cannot do their jobs from home and they can't do their jobs as far as calling in or anything, so.
So the motion is to send this to the council.
Send it to the council with the?
With, with an addendum that we request that the council consider forming a committee that would provide an overall view. You know, I balk a little bit about the idea of essential versus non-essential, because, you know, we, we all know how this county runs.
I didn't call anybody non-essential.
Yeah, I know, but I'm hearing, I'm hearing in my head the voice of some, some of our folks saying, hey, what about me? I think that it would be fair and equitable to ask the council to not only consider your, the work that you presented on behalf of the other department heads, but to also look at this as holistically and see how do we address the issue of finances in light of the fact that we are losing some very critical and well-trained people who may or may not be on the non-essential or essential list, but still are, are important to our county. We've put our, they've got, you know, experience, they've got knowledge, and all that knowledge walks out the door. And I just, I think that it would be great to look at it as a whole. So that would be my motion.
I would, I would agree that Commissioner Mathias is on the right, is on the right track there. We've lost a number of people, you pointed out two in your department, bringing basically back up to five down. Our EMS department has lost another two paramedics over this past week, they're, they're down six now.
Over this month?
Yeah, yeah. Which, which I think the council should be tasked with and hopefully will see, and I'm sure they are, I've spoken to several of them.
They have a hard job.
Yeah, of trying to.
With what they have.
Yeah, make sure that we're competitive to neighboring jurisdictions, especially considering the workload that's put on a lot of our, including, you know, a lot of our emergency responders, not just, not just EMS. But I think, think this is something that ultimately the council needs to decide, so I would second that, that the, the council should take a look at this and mostly with the emphasis that, that they need to take a look at salaries in general, especially targeted, look at salaries for certain positions that are well under what the, the averages for our area.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Consider permission to approach the council for unpaid expenses from 2020 election. Heather Stevens, clerk.
Hi.
Hi, Heather. She's on.
I'm sorry, I was at a different meeting. I'm actually requesting to go to the council for some unpaid election expenses from last year. I'm going to need additional appropriations.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Next, consider permission to approach the council to use non-reverting funds. Lynn Swanson, coroner, the last person I want to see.
I'm always the last person you want to see. Okay, I'm here to request again to approach the council to spend out of my non-reverting account. Since I've not been able to hire a secretary 10 hours a week, I'm going to hire the first person off the street I can find and pay them to help me work in the office. I don't really mean like that, but I've got to have help. I can't do this, I cannot run this whole office by myself.
We have, you've heard the, heard the request, can I have a motion?
It's coming out of the non-reverting funds, I move to send it to the council.
Well, she wants permission to go to the council.
Yes.
It'll be their decision.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Consider permission to travel to Boston for training. Steve Iraik, adult probation. Are you there, Steve?
I believe, I believe, yeah, he was out of town.
I believe he's out of town.
And he spoke to me about this, I would move to approve.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Consider permission to travel to Austin for training. John Lake, prosecutor.
Mr. President, I move to approve. Oh, there you are.
Mr. President, this is Barry McDonald, can you hear me?
Yes, I do.
I'm here on behalf of. Mr. Lake, in my role as deputy prosecutor in charge of the Child Support Enforcement Division, it's, it's our office that would seek your permission to send three of our employees in the Child Support Office to the National Child Support Enforcement Association Leadership Symposium in Austin, Texas, August 1st through 4th. It's a great opportunity not only to get some continuing legal education, which we greatly need, because of course, last year, a lot of that got put on hold, both on the state and federal level, but also because a fair amount of our cases involve interstate child support matters, it's a great opportunity for our staff to kind of put a name to a face of people in other jurisdictions who will end up needing the support and help of as we enforce Indiana orders all across the country. So we obviously have adequate funds in our 4D incentive account to pay for the entirety of all the expenses related to travel, registration, et cetera. So we would seek your approval to send those three staff members.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, consider LaPorte County Historical Society Board of Directors' recommendation for Assistant Museum Director Bruce Johnson, board president. Yeah, we've seen your emails, it sounded like your person is very qualified.
Bruce Johnson, I'm president of the LaPorte County Social Society Board of Directors, and on behalf of our board of directors, I'd like to recommend Danielle Adams to be our new assistant museum director.
I'm sure you've all seen the qualifications.
Mr. President, I move to approve, she sounds like a very talented addition to the, to the team.
She's one of my former students.
Oh, that's great. That's great.
Excellent, yeah, resume is very, very impressive. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Moving into old business, consider second and final reading on ordinance to vacate undeveloped roadway on East Belmont Drive in New Carlyle. Andrew Volz, attorney, this was tabled for the last meeting, I would need a, oh boy, Beetlejuice, I would need a motion to take it off the table for us to discuss it.
Move to take it off the table?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's off the table, let's discuss it.
All right. Good evening, commissioners, Mike Pollan, building commissioner. Do we have any of the attorneys under A through C, Paul Willoughby, Ambrose? If they want to speak first, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
You have the floor, sir. Who we got? Mr. Volz?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here on behalf of a couple of clients that I have with regards to petitions to vacate that were properly filed and then approved. I believe they came before the, your commissioners' meeting a couple of weeks ago, and now there has been a change in the statute. It would be my position that, and Mr. Pollan may be able to speak to this, that regardless of the change in the statute that occurred the first week in July, at the end of the day, first reading occurred, second reading should have occurred, and it should be approved by the commissioners based upon the previous statute. And then obviously, moving forward, we're going to have a different ballgame with regards to how these petitions to vacate are going to be treated.
Sure, if, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I was speaking with Attorney Beechey about this.
Is he here?
No, I, I'm prepared to speak those, remember the plan commission?
Yeah, go ahead, I think we already know what this authority is, but.
Sure, so the, the discrepancy that we, we had come up with, which we're looking to change at an upcoming plan commission meeting, if it's amenable to the rest of the board, is that while the state statute changed, still our local ordinances here, JZO, hasn't been updated to match the state. So while the state will allow it, the county still technically, we as commissioners would still need to vote it up or down based upon the fact that our local stuff here is still in place. And I spoke with Attorney Beechey on that, and that was his legal recommendation, so I would say we should give these an up or down vote tonight. And then if, you know, if for some reason later on down the line it comes that we didn't need to, then it doesn't matter that we did anyway. But if this at least keeps the ball rolling for these petitions here, and as it looks, we need to bring our local code in line with what the state, or we should anyway, bring it in line with what the state says. Hopefully that clarifies where we are with all that.
The plan commission did vote to send us, to us with an approval?
Yes.
Favorable approval.
Yes, and that was done as Attorney Volz said, under the previous ordinance, so I would actually concur with Attorney Volz and Commissioner Haney, that this board should finish up these vacates under old business. Once the state and local ordinances, the new ones are in effect, we'll just stop sending them to you.
Thank you.
But for now, I would feel comfortable with this board proceeding with this.
Well, we, we have, have a request here to consider on second reading. Would we entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, don't go away. Consider second and final reading on ordinance to vacate undeveloped roadway at Eastog and Trail. Same, it's the same thing.
I would move to, move to approve.
Yeah, you'll need to take it off.
Or take it off the table first.
Apologies, move to, take it off, take it off the table.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Miami Trail and Rolling Prairie, Andrew Volz, attorney, this was also tabled last meeting.
That's part of the B, the.
Oh, that's from that one.
Yeah, that's, the next one is the.
Okay, we consider.
Briar Leaf.
Yeah, Mr. President, we, I had communication from Attorney Chris Willoughby, who asked that this be continued for a month, that they are still working on various items that were raised by the commissioners the last meeting, and so they asked that it be tabled for consideration for a month.
Mr. President, I move to table this request, this ordinance on second reading.
The ordinance proposed 47-unit townhome development north of Briar Leaf Golf Course. Got it, okay, I have a motion.
Just clarification, the developers asked for it to be tabled?
Pardon?
The developers, you said asked for it.
The attorney for the developer.
Attorney, okay, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And you're still there. Consider, it said a first reading on ordinance to vacate unimproved roadway east Poppy Lane in Hudson Township. Dave Ambrose, attorney, this was also tabled.
I move that we take it off the table.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And this would be the same, this would be a first reading. What was this, was this before the plan commission, prior to the change?
Yeah, this, this is in the same group as the other ones.
Got it, okay.
Is the attorney here?
It must be for a first reading.
Yep, I don't see anybody.
Dave Ambrose was the attorney, let's see, is anybody, nobody on Zoom for this? It was, it was passed by the plan commission?
Correct.
So do you want to consider this on the first reading?
Yes.
Got it. Much pleasure.
Well, I, I'm uncomfortable passing it on first reading when we don't have anyone to speak to it or to explain it, so the public knows what we're talking about.
So first reading?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're on the plan commission, or you are, one of you want to give us some information on it?
We are. So this was a, is this, is this the one that I'm remembering correctly, where there was buildings in the right of way, both to the south and east of the property? If that's what I'm thinking of?
I'm kind of thinking the same thing, yes.
I feel like, I feel like that was, I know Attorney Ambrose was representing, I think, two different ones, and I'm pretty sure this is the one where the, the owner of the property had put structures in the county right of way, both to the south and east of his property. And I'm, I'm going to look through here and make sure that we have the exact.
Was there remonstrators on this?
Thing here?
I, I think there was, and.
I feel like there may have been on that, I believe that, I believe I was alone dissenting vote on that, I think I was alone nay, if this, if this is the same one, and I apologize because it's been over a month and a half now on this, and I don't see the, I don't see the satellite imagery to go along with this one right here.
So, Mr. President, I, I move that we table this, or return it to the table, because unless Mr. Ambrose or someone is able to, you know, Commissioner Haney, you're a member of the commission, but you're, you know, you're, this isn't your, your ordinance request, so I would, I would suggest that we ask that someone from this, whoever spoke in defense of this request at the plan commission, come to the commission and present as well.
Remember, there was some controversy on this.
Yeah, that's why I'm concerned, that if there were remonstrators or whatever.
Put this back on the table, Lynn.
Yeah, I, I think that would be wise.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Put this back on the table and you guys can, maybe Attorney can show up next time.
Yeah, sorry to hold it up, but I, I'm just not comfortable.
No problem.
Thank you.
And Mr. Pollan, if you don't mind, if, if this is that one that we're talking about, which I'm 99% sure it is, if you could, they, they made an indication that if we approved it, they would remove that other structure from the other right of way that wasn't being vacated. If you could just kindly remind them that it would be an extraordinarily good shield of faith to actually remove that structure before we vote in approval, as opposed to saying they'll remove it if we do, that was a curious part of that and one of the reasons why I voted against it.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Will do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Next on the agenda, consider new vehicles not to exceed $150,000. Roof repair at the museum not to exceed $150,000. Larry Lewandowski, Director of Facilities.
Good evening, Commissioners, Larry Lewandowski, Director of Facilities. I came to you before you, at the meeting earlier this month, with a, asking to go for, on front counts for not to exceed $150,000. We did reach out and source well, has gotten us pricing back on two trucks and SUV. SUV is to be used by the housekeeper so that they can get around to all their outbuildings in the area. The price that we got back is $111,174 for all three vehicles, so I'm asking for permission to approach council for that.
That's a good price.
Mr. Rice, I move to approve that first request.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then also on the roof repair.
So on the roof repair, we do have the price back, the low price that we have was under $150,000, it came in at $148,700, that's to do the roof repairs, fix and work around the chimney, the cupola, the handrail on the front, and to replace six skylights of the 19 are there. Now, I did meet with Doc Kestling earlier this week and a few members of their board, there are some extra things that they would like to seek having done while the work is being done there. We are getting some pricing on that, so we're asking that we, permission to go to council for the original price that we have, and then I'm going to ask them while I'm there to give a favorable favor from them to move forward with the extra work that the museum is asking for.
Got you.
Mr. President, I move to approve the request to approach the council for roof repair at the museum not to exceed $150,000. And thank you, Mr. Lewandowski, for all the due diligence in getting this prepared.
Now, would you like me to come back once we get the other pricing? Would you like me to come back to you, or can I just take it to council?
You just take it to the council.
Okay.
They're going to make the decision.
The last time I spoke with Dr. Kestling, he was, he was amenable to his earlier justificat, or assertion that he would, he would pay, he would pay some, contribute some to the replacement, whether if he's still amenable today, still going to do that?
Yes, in a meeting that we had Tuesday, I believe, we had a meeting and he was still fearful with that.
Perfect, I, I thought he did.
It was a very positive meeting with, with the members of the, with their members and him.
I'm glad, I'm glad we're going to finally get this taken care of, it's a beautiful building, beautiful.
It is.
It's newly maintained, thank you, second.
Have a motion to approve his request, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consider adopting written determination supporting the county's utilization and purchase of services and equipment recommended by the team of WJE Engineers and Marcus Electric for $1.5 million in repairs to the Franklin Street Bridge under special purchase provisions of IC 5-22-10-1. I think you guys have had a chance to look that over.
Mr. President, I would request that the attorney give us, for public consumption, just a quick summary of why we're doing this and, and the special purchase provisions. I could explain it, and I know that the other commissioners could as well, but perhaps hearing it from the legal perspective would be helpful.
Sure, I'm happy to do it, just in.
Just in brief, the Indiana statute provides a method for the commission to legally and appropriately move forward with selection, as you have done, of WJE Engineers and Marques Electric for the 1.5 million in repairs that are required for Franklin Street Bridge without doing competitive sealed bid because of various items. But in order to do that, as you've done, you need to make a determination a matter of public record at a public commission meeting so that the determination is available for inspection by the State Board of Accounts. The statute provides you various options, and based on my communications with each of you, it appears that there are two particular provisions that you could find. One, that there exists a unique opportunity to obtain supplies or services at a substantial savings under Indiana Code 5-22-10-5, and that the urgency of moving of the repairs soon mandated that using another purchasing method, in this case sealed bid, could seriously impair the functioning of this agency, the county commissioners, under 5-22-10-9. And since this is a very specialized and historic bridge, plays a critical role in economic activity in the city of Michigan City, and the taxpayers are best served by the proposal that Andy Skiat, his team with WJE have come up with, they all have unique and unparalleled expertise with this particular bridge, and that should then be noted if that's, and that is kind of the essence of what I've gotten from all three of you, that there is a basis and a need to use this particular consortium of WJE Engineers and Marques, and that you make that permanently of record so it's available for inspection by the State Board of Accounts.
Makes perfect sense.
Mr. President, I move to approve adopting written determination supporting the county's utilization and purchase service and equipment as described under special purchase provisions. And as a former mayor of Michigan City, not only is it a part of the economic engine for the city of Michigan City, it's an economic engine for this county because it leads us to the lakefront, to all of the marine activities. It's a public safety issue, it's a DNR issue, it's an Army Corps issue, it's a boating safety issue, and we cannot allow this bridge to, at any time, for public safety alone, to have it in a raised position where people are not able to get back and forth across that bridge. So it's historic in nature, the Marques Electric has a 20, 25-year history of being the, having some unique and historical repair experience on that bridge. I think that we would be foolhardy to turn this down. So I am moving that we consider this written determination to get this project moving forward.
Well played.
For, for clarification here, Commissioner Mateus, are you saying the IC 5-22-10-8 special purchase is, I'm sorry, which, which was what you were citing under to move forward with?
I'm citing the number F on our agenda, the entire, the entire statement there.
The entire thing, so that would be, I guess we'd have IC 5-22-10-8 special purchase as well as IC 5-22-10-4 urgency due to, there's an urgency due to a delay may cause issues, both?
Sure.
Okay. The only reason why I'm asking, I want to make sure we do this right, because as Attorney Friedman pointed out in some of the emails he had, we need to make sure that we're stating for the record so the State Board of Accounts knows exactly what we're doing, so they'll refer back to this as their kind of goalpost for determining if this falls in line, you know, so we don't get some sort of audit exemption or anything else. I know that we've looked back on this, we've been, at least, I've been involved in the process since January, we had a workshop January 13th about this. Over the next couple of months, we went through a number of different things. We had some proposals come back for the bridge. There was the multimillion dollar, thirty-some odd million dollar proposal, there's another $20 million proposal, there was a proposal by Marques for 5 million, it was basically a million dollars a year for five-year proposal, which at the time was very amenable too. And I had hoped that we had, would have voted on that plan sometime over the past several months. I do want to make sure I'm absolutely clear on that, the company that we're talking about here, Marques has been, since I've been involved with this since January, they've been Johnny on the spot with some of the issues that have come up in the county. The work that they did to get the bridge back open for, for the repairs that they made back open for, you know, late spring, early summer when the bridge was supposed to come up was right on time. I don't believe we've had any issue with any of the work they performed, and I've been perfectly happy with everything that I've seen from them so far this year. So I want to make clear that whatever issues and concerns I have here with the process, not with Marques, they've done fantastic as far as I'm concerned, not just with the bridge, but other issues that have popped up in the county. So I want to make sure that we separate the two and the fantastic work they've done versus kind of the process here. So when I look at 5-22-10-8 for special purpose, it says things like there's only one source, and it would seriously impair the functioning of the, of the using agency. I look at that and I know that, for example, Marques, there's an email that got looped in where they talk about over a million, I think it was right at, yeah, over a million dollars is going to be sent out for equipment, stuff like that. So when we look at that, you know, two-thirds, just over two-thirds of the 1.5 million is actually coming from another source. So I don't think we can use 5-22-10-8 as special purpose, as, you know, quote unquote, only one source. I do look to the other one for urgency, and it reminds me of a quote in the past, we used to have, you know, from a number of different folks where, you know, a delay on your part does not constitute a urgency on my part. I think it's critical we get this bridge open, we keep the bridge open and keep it functioning for all the reasons you mentioned, Commissioner Mateus, it is, you know, lifeline to the, to, you know, from one side of Michigan City to the other and all the other reasons you listed. But when I look at IC 5-22-10-4, I wonder why we didn't vote months ago on Marques's $5 million plan, which I think at the time, all of us agreed was a fantastic way to go. And we've kind of delayed on bringing this before ourselves for four months now. So my issue is that I am concerned about, and again, this is in no way a reflection of the company we're talking about here, it's about the process of awarding a $1.5 million, basically no bid contract right here. I know the council voted on this, voted on 1.5 million, but, and I was at that three-hour meeting, I know you were at the beginning of it, I was at the entire three-plus hour meeting where this came up. And it's my recollection in speaking with a couple of council people, they didn't intend for, at least in my estimation and from speaking with at least two council people, they didn't intend for this to be a no bid award. So I am, I am concerned that the delay that created urgency just isn't, won't pass muster with the State Board of Accounts for IC 5-22-10-4. And also, I have concerns that if we do this, it wasn't the, the council was, in my, in my opinion, trying to help us move forward, but at a minimum, if there's some way to justify this, which I'm not seeing right now, if there is, we should absolutely condition it at a minimum on the council getting another vote on this, their next meeting is in a couple of days anyway, because I don't believe it was the council's intention to not have $1.5 million and not go out for bid. I don't know if there's any other kind of thoughts that my fellow commissioners have, but this, I've got concerns over this, and I don't think this is going to pass muster for the State Board of Accounts.
Well, that'd be up to them, not us. The thing is, and I know I've explained this before, I don't know how I missed it, the million dollars a year for five years was the original proposal. That was before they did the inspection and found that the, that the drive system and the control system are bad. They need to be fixed. That's a big ticket item. That, by replacing that, will give us a whole lot better bridge right now. It's going to buy us a lot of time. We may not have to use a million dollars a year for five years. This million and a half is going to go a long way to making the bridge operational. It's critical that this gets done. No way does it make any sense in my mind, something that critical, to bring in somebody that doesn't know anything about our bridge, when we've got these same people working on the bridge for over 20 years, they know it like the back of their hand. When that bridge breaks, we get a call, the bridge is down, we're working on it, you get a call, the bridge is fixed, it's back up. Those people, they know the bridge better than anybody in the world. It would not make any sense to me whatsoever to bring in somebody that has no experience with the bridge, and would probably be a heck of a lot more expensive. This makes sense. This is to make sure that we are covered, to do the job the way it should be done. We have a motion?
You mentioned the $5 million plan just then. Do you know how much of this 1.5 would have been in the 5 million?
Probably a million and a half of it at least. The thing about this is they have to order these parts, they have to be special made.
Takes a look.
Looking at four months out, at least, looking at when they close this in December, three months at least to rebuild it, they've got it down, they've got, they're the ones that figured out what it has to be done. In looking at the electrical system downstairs, I don't know if you've been down there, there's three big panels. Originally, it was going to be about $800,000. Marques has figured this out, how to, for lack of a better word, an adapter to use the system we have without having to spend all that money. They've saved us a ton of money right off the get-go. That's the kind of people we want working on this, the people who have, they're taxpayers here, they have a vested interest in doing this right. It would be stupid to go elsewhere and don't know what you're getting when we've got the best there is, right here.
Mr. President, if I could, help clarify too.
Just, just one moment, because I want to touch on that, because I do think that's important. Marques, you mentioned the voltage, yeah, they're, the electrical panels, they're actually going to want to convert some of the voltage there, I think it's a 380 to 4, something, 320 to 480. I'm not an electrician, but I spoke with them about that, and they're, they're not charging us for engineering work, so there is a lot in there that's good. So I want to make sure that, you know, I don't want to discourage Marques Electric or anybody to think, my issue, of course, is with the process, as I said, I think highly of Marques Electric, it's just, I'm concerned that as we go through these processes that, I want that transparency there for the public, I want to be able to look, look the taxpayers in the eye and say, you know, we did our due diligence, not just are we comporting ourselves with what will be acceptable to the State Board of Accounts, but to the taxpayers to be able to look in the eye and say, you know, when I told you, you know, the days of no bid contracts were over in Lepore County, I meant it. And this is in no way against Marques Electric, like I said, they've done fantastic, and I don't want, there to be any misconception with what I'm saying here, it's simply the process that I've taken issue with. You were going to say?
Yes, Mr. President, we need to make clear for the record that the special purpose statute is specifically there for situations like this.
What is there for?
And I think the commission wants to make clear too, that you're not buying a pig of the poke, there is a detailed estimate of costs connected with this that needs to be made part of the record as well. Supplied equipment, 665,598. Engineering services, 680,921. WJE Engineering is part of this program, they're, they've done bridges throughout the country. So I think, I know, we don't want to leave anyone with the impression that the commission has not done its due diligence, that in fact, you're making a detailed recitation of the reasons for this part of the record, and I'm suggesting that the seven-page recitation, detailed breakdown be made part of this motion so that it's part of the record that you approved tonight.
So, Mr. President, I have one more thing to say. While I respect my colleagues' concerns, having worked with the State Board of Accounts for many years, we are covering their concerns with this, this written determination, and we are, our lawyer has done the due diligence, but in fact, if you are interested in looking the taxpayer in the eye, you make sure you're able to tell them that when their child is in trouble at that beach, and we got to get to Franciscan Healthcare to make sure that that child lives, you look them in the eye and make sure that darn bridge is up and working, and there is no hesitation, no pause. It's a public safety concern. It is urgent because we cannot afford a life loss because that bridge is, is raised and can't be operable. To me, it is, this is a no-brainer, the taxpayers know that we have done due diligence, we have examined all the options. Looking for a bridge-making company or a bridge-construction company out of Chicago makes absolutely no sense. I will tell you, and I can see some of the people in the room that would attest to the fact, that when there's a blizzard and that bridge is not functioning, or it's flooding into the pump room, who's there? In eight minutes, Marques Electric and their team are there, you will not get that kind of response in this community from somebody, you know, two, three hours away or somewhere across the country. So I think we are making a really wise move. The parts have to be constructed for this bridge, so that will take four, four months, five months. Last year, Marques closed, when the bridge closed in the beginning of the fall, or the end of the fall, all that, everything was lined up perfectly, and we got almost daily reports from them as to where they were in the reconstruction process. I think that this is a really wise move.
I have a question, if I might, as the auditor, I'll be paying this bill if it passes, $1.5 million, and I, I have a question to ask that I think is important, if I may, Commissioners. Has this, I'd ask it of the attorney, has this statute, I believe it's public law that dates back to at least 1997, has this statute been used before by Lepore County at any point in time in your history?
I'm not sure, about 100 years, what I'm telling you, Mr. Stabo, it was.
I'm sorry, the question was very clear. If you don't, you don't know, that's okay.
You know what?
I'm sorry, is that the answer?
You know what? I've given you my best legal advice about the statute.
Are you answering the question or not?
I don't recall when else the.
That's okay.
But I got to tell you, you know what, we do our due diligence, we provide our best advice to the county, we've done that, we have laid a basis that the State Board of Accounts would have if they have any inquiry, the council's approved the appropriation, I think Mr. Novak could address that as well, and we've given a basis to move forward on this.
So we don't know how many times Novak's been used.
The only thing I want to add is, is being the fire chief of Michigan City, we use this statute several times because I believe the 911 center, who's run by Minor Electronics, is the radio people that work on our 911 center. They're the only contractor that it's allowed in it because they know what's in there, so the provision is used when they do that. We use it when the fire department, when we had to, the lakefront cameras, it was, there was only one provider that was able to do the job, and we were able to determine it, and we use this same statute. So we actually use it several times, so that's all.
Thank you, Randy. It's clearly usable for bona fide emergencies, I've read the statute myself, so.
Can I have a second on this?
I do have one more question, I know I saw it in the, in the email list as we went through here. I did have a question here, there was a, in our email correspondence here, one of which is from Mr., from Mr. Councilman Yagelski. There's an email here that talks about working with the State Board of Accounts, taking the position that if the county attorney offers an opinion on a potential purchase method, that they will not take an audit exemption. I'm just curious, looking at this email from July 10th at 7:10 PM, it appears this email actually originated, did you write this email for Councilman Yagelski?
No, he asked for information, and I believe he then submitted an email to all of you indicating that we needed to move forward.
Sure, and the reason for my question is, there's two emails here, one, 7/13, that's sent out to all of us, which, which starts out with what you emailed him, because there's two emails here, for my fellow commissioners, if you aren't familiar with, with that email exchange, you don't have it here in front of you so that you can look at that. The first one here is at 7:10, where there's an email from our attorney to Councilman Yagelski, it says suggested reply all, and then there's four paragraphs here, and then it's signed Mark. So that went out with a thank you, where he copied, he copied everyone on this. But then, there's a second email three minutes later, and it's verbatim what you emailed him, with the exception, obviously, he removed the thank you and the header, but it's identical to that, which, which leads me to believe that this was ghostwritten by you, unless I'm mistaken, because that's what the email chain shows.
I provided him, but you'll notice there's a fifth paragraph that he did add on his own, and we can go ahead and add, reference that to the record if you like. Have you noticed the fifth paragraph, Mr. Haney? We're going to go down by line and verse, "I have suggested various responses to Mr. Yagelski," and then, interestingly enough, in his email, he says, "As a final matter, I must take strong exception to your characterizing the attorney's legal opinion as playing fast and loose or claiming this is an end-around proper procedure. You need to be very careful before casting stones on a project and a purchasing procedure when you have absolutely no background or knowledge on either."
That's his, not mine. Sure, sure, the fifth paragraph is, I was talking about the other four paragraphs.
That's right.
So, Mr. President, this shouldn't be a tit-for-tat between a commissioner and the attorney, and, you know, I don't know what that's all about. We're talking about a public safety issue and a bridge that needs to be repaired that is really old, and we cannot risk public safety. So could we stick to the point, please?
Utilize the taxpayers' money in the best possible way. Have you got a second?
No.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we'll move on. Consider permission to use undeveloped roadway to access property on Pine Brook Drive. Michael McPollock, Nipco retiring, extraordinary.
McPollock, 2656 North Tiffany Drive, Lepore.
Yeah, I don't, no, my fellow commissioner, I've looked this Yeah, I don't, no, my fellow Commissioners, I've looked this over. I've talked with Randy about it and with Mike. I understand exactly what you're up to.
I don't, this is pretty straightforward to me.
It's pretty straightforward, yeah. It's just.
Could I just say, since the public doesn't maybe have the depth? I don't know who wants to summarize it, just so the public understands what we're working on.
Randy Novak, I'm a personal friend of. You admit that in public. I am. Anyway, so basically, Mick purchased the 50 acres that you see there as parcel one. And on the map, in the little, there's an unimproved roadway that goes in between there and Pinewood Drive. So he went to the building commissioner to get a driveway permit. And it was granted a driveway permit, but it starts where his property starts, not over the county property. So in his actual deed that he received on the property, which you have a copy of in the highlighted section, it says, "Together with the right of ingress and egress over the 50-foot right-of-way planted as Pine Brook Street," is what they call it then, "in said subdivision running from parcel number one, which is what Mick owns, to County Road 275 North." So it's actually in his deed that he has access to utilize that unimproved parcel. And the purpose of him coming here now is just to, is to just make absolute sure and so that it's on record that he comes for the Commissioners. Yeah, you're not going to pave it or use it to get to your property. You can't have a property that's stranded. Understand that. There's, for the record, there's other ways to get there. This is the ideal way to get there. Got it. But the other way, he'd have to put a bridge over a creek. With the river quiet. Understand what you want. I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Pollan, any weighing in on this?
I'm just here to answer any questions and clarify the situation.
Thank you.
I can understand.
Mr. President, I move to approve by granting permission to use the undeveloped roadway to access the property, Mr. Pollack's property and Pinewood Drive.
I would second, and I would just ask if there's any remonstrators here, just in case. I'm seeing, second.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mick. Good to see you again. Consider resolution to support the continued publishing notices of legal actions in local newspapers in addition to posting on state court website. I don't know how we got to this point where they want to take that away, but this is pretty important.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to at least read the first couple of wherethes in our resolutions. This is a resolution from the Board of Commissioners urging the Indiana Supreme Court to retain use of local newspapers for legal notices. And whereas the Indiana Supreme Court recently proposed a change through Trial Rule 4.13 that would permit posting of public legal notices on its website as an alternative to publication in the local newspaper in Indiana. And whereas for decades, citizens have come to rely on local newspapers for information on sheriff's sales of property, estate administration, summons, notices of lawsuit and change of name notices. And it goes on and on to talk about the role of our local newspapers in keeping our citizens informed. And I would, I don't understand what they're coming up, why they're thinking this is an improvement. But certainly, our citizens deserve to have what they are accustomed to, to publication in our local newspapers. And I would suggest that if the Supreme Court would like to, as an add-on, put postings on their website, that's terrific, just great. But to take that new information and the valued information away from people in our community, I think that is ill-advised. And in fact, the revenue from all of those notices are what keeps our papers in business. And there is a definite role. Newspapers may be, you know, one way of getting information anymore. It's still a very important way. And I think that we need to support our local media by making sure that citizens can get the information that they seek in their local newspapers.
Sure, because there's places in the county that they don't have Wi-Fi.
Yep.
So they can't go on our website to look up things. They probably listen to stand on the radio, but if they can stand in. No, just kidding. But this is, this is the way we advertise our meetings and has for a long time. So you made motion to.
So I move that we adopt this resolution urging the Indiana Supreme Court to retain the use of local newspaper for legal notices.
I'll second that, and I agree with both of you. I think, I think it's fantastic that they want to post more things online to make it more accessible for those who are technologically savvy and those who really want to search out this information online. It makes it much easier to find than just in a newspaper. But I do not think the world is ready to stop, to stop seeing these being published in newspapers. There's too many people that rely on them, that check them routinely. And again, our internet service here in especially the southern parts of the county are not as well-developed as they should be. We continue to work on that. So yes.
Since this is a resolution by our own rulers or anyone for the public that wants to comment on this.
Commissioners, my office has a, I will say that my office has a responsibility to advertise some things. We have to advertise like the tab rate chart, which lists all the tax rates for all the taxing entities, three times. That obviously has gone, that has gone down and changed. So it will really ultimately be up to the Council to decide if they want to continue to fund, put in our budgets the adequate amounts to continue advertising these items as you are recommending.
There are still some people in the county that read that paper, all three pages.
And the alternative papers to the regional Westville indicator and the regional. I mean, those are all ways that we reach our folks and get information shared.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We've ran out of agenda, down to our favorite part, Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Haney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, it's been extremely busy two weeks. We had animal shelter dedication for former Director Jane Bernard. That was fantastic. It was huge attendance out there for that. I was really happy to see that. And attended numerous other meetings and met with almost every department out of these past two weeks. There was other things that came up, such as the Lepore County Housing Study presentation. I was on it. I think I was not alone on that as well. Of course, obviously, we had the fair. It was the best Wednesday ever with over 10,000 tickets sold. It was absolutely packed there Wednesday. I was out at the fair most of the days for at least a couple hours every day. And man, Wednesday night, it was packed, and I was so happy to see that. Also had a meeting with IBW NECA up in Michigan City, where we talked about the Indiana Plan and working on some hiring practices to make sure we're reaching out to all aspects of the community in regard to the trades as well. Had a solid waste district budget meeting where we continue to make sure that the trimming that we did on the budget, for the most part, was maintained from earlier this year going into next year. So I'll be ready to present on time. There's a couple other things that I'm looking into. Want to work with my fellow Commissioners and the animal shelter and hopefully get us back to some pre-COVID hours. I know we're still doing mostly daytime hours. I'd like to see us move back to one or two evenings so that folks, when they come home from work, the shelter closing at four every day, it's kind of rough for folks who want to adopt, that don't, you know, let's say, get home until four or five o'clock. So one or two, going back to one or two nights a week open at six, I think, would be great. One of the other things that I'd like to work on, I'd like to see all of our, the county emails that we do as far as officials, officials, department heads, as well as advisors, moved over to a county system so that any county business that we're doing is make sure that from end to end stays maintained on our county servers. I think that would go a long way for some of the trust and transparency here in the county to make sure the county's maintaining all those emails in-house, so to speak. I think that would be great, and I think that would be an incentive and something worth pursuing. Following up on some earlier comments, we touched on them earlier when Director Houston was up here, as far as hoping the Council takes a hard look at salaries across the board. As wages continue to rise, we need to look across the board for our employees' raises, as well as some targeted specifics in regards to positions like paramedics. Our average, you know, from the state here is, you know, a solid $10,000 less than this county, the neighboring municipalities. Obviously, there's things to consider when you look at private sector. It's going to pay significantly more. Their benefits aren't going to be as good. Our benefits here in this county, especially our county insurance. Health insurance is fantastic. Sometimes it gets lost in the mix, but it's important to keep that in mind as well. Transparency and trust and truth kind of go hand in hand. And I was talking earlier about an email exchange. I rely on my fellow elected officials, department heads, to get their honest opinion, insight on things. Been working with the Council, for example. Making sure that I understand where they're coming from, what their thoughts are, when we're engaging in communication. That's why I brought that up. I think it's important that, I want to make sure that regardless of how a person comes to a determination on a certain position, that I'm hearing it from them in their own words so that they can articulate to me as best they feel their position is, rather than, you know, some sort of copy paste. Albert Einstein said, "Whenever there is, whoever is careless with the truth in small matters cannot be trusted with important matters." And as we move forward and we look at things, Washington's take was that truth will ultimately prevail where there is pains to bring it to light. And I think that pains to bring it to light is something that we've struggled with here in this county over the past several months. James Garfield, I think, probably put it best when he said, and everybody's familiar with the first half of this, "The truth will set you free." The second part of that was, "But first, it will make you miserable." And I think there's some of that, I think there's some of that truth in both of those, that there can be pains sometimes in bringing things to light. It's not necessarily pretty. Getting to see how the sausage is made in one regard, it can be eye-opening to some, especially to somebody brand-new in politics like myself. I don't, I think I made it perfectly clear that I'm not a fan of that. But I do take heart in what Mahatma Gandhi said, that even if you are a minority of one, the truth is the truth. And that's what I've tried to stay focused on as we move forward, is making sure that we, that I try and be as truthful and transparent and honest as possible and present things without sugarcoating them or seeing things get swept under the rug. And with that, it has been a long evening. Thank you for your time.
You're done?
I am.
That's funny. I thank you, Mr. President. I would like to just have one quick comment from our attorney in regards to the public access perspective on Zoom meetings. My understanding was it's, we were permitted to have Zoom meetings, I think, until the end of the month or until the end of next month. Could you clarify? And then this Commission passed a resolution. And I want to be sure that all of our boards and Commissions understand that that resolution is in effect for their meetings as well. You know, there's, while Zoom certainly was helpful during the pandemic, it also opened up a lot of our meetings. It made people who live in Rolling Prairie or Michigan City or Ouanahtah, they're able to now access information that they had to drive here to be able to absorb information or to understand an issue. And so for me, it's not just about the convenience of those of us who attend meetings. It's also for the convenience of our public. So that it's another public access point that they can log into a meeting and observe or listen on Zoom to something that they may not. And it's environmentally friendly. They don't have to burn up gas to drive, you know, 40 miles to get to a meeting. So I wondered if you could clarify for me and for others what the ruling is on Zoom in regards to our meetings and what any other recommendations we may have to push forward.
Fair question, Commissioner. As long as the public health emergency continues under state governor's order, you can continue holding meetings via Zoom. And so, because I heard there was a question today about another county board, and you're absolutely permitted to continue to hold meetings via Zoom as long as the public health emergency continues. I spoke to the Public Access Counselor today. And while that continues, at least through the end of July, he thinks there may be an extension, may be an extension into August. Now, once the public health emergency ends and the authority is no longer there, then state law, as approved by the legislature, says that you've got to go ahead and adopt a resolution allowing participation by electronic means. You've already done that. We wanted to make clear as well, and the Public Access Counselor concurs, that any county boards are subject to that as well. The county council has adopted its own resolution. But any county board would then be able to meet using electronic means and the restrictions under the new statute as long as the Commission had passed its resolution, which you have. So any county board, E911 board, any of the advisory boards can have members participating via Zoom. As you know, under the statute, under the new policy, there can only be two consecutive meetings via Zoom, and no more than half of the meetings in a given year can be attended via Zoom. But legislature, in its wisdom, determined even after the public health emergency expires, public agencies are able to utilize, utilize that statute so that, to allow electronic participation. Now, there was another board, I believe, that held a meeting. It will need to, if it's not a county board, that any other public entity in this county would need to adopt a specific resolution like the Commissioners did to allow electronic meetings. I understand the solid waste district had met. So you'll need to do that as well if that's the pleasure of the board, of the solid waste board, that once the public health emergency ends, you can adopt, you adopt a resolution to allow it to go forward. But even currently, the board can maintain and allow participation via Zoom.
Thank you. Next, I wanted to mention that July is Disability Pride Month. And I want to give a special shout-out to our local Myers store. They were named, once again, in 2021, a best place to work for disability inclusion by the Disability Indiana and the American Association of People with Disabilities. And that's, that's something to talk about. I also wanted to mention that we've passed, sent forward to the Council the request to fund the HR EO compliance and recruitment officer. And one of the jobs that that person would have is to make sure that we are recruiting our county employees from underrepresented groups, which would include veterans, community of color, and persons with disabilities. So since it's Disability Pride Month, I wanted to be sure that we included persons with disability in that recruitment target. And then I was really delighted that the three Commissioners were able to join community leaders from Michigan City in particular and the Regional Director of the Indiana Plan to increase our knowledge of how to make sure that underrepresented groups get access to union apprenticeships and union pathways to a great career. And I think that that's, that's a great step forward and interested to have the next meeting with that group. So tonight, I can't resist. I probably should resist, but, you know, I'm hearing a lot about something that, you know, you hear on the national news. It's like conspiracy theories about everything. I've been around politics and government and public service for many years of my adult life. And, you know, I am a big believer in the goodness of people. And I would say that 99.9% of the people that we work with are good people. But my father used to always, he couldn't, he couldn't speak French, but he had a great little French phrase he liked to throw out. And he would say, "Hone swaki mali ponce. Evil is he who evil thinks." So I think we need to focus on the positive, focus on the goodness in people, the kindness in people, and realize that we're all in this together. So good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've all been loaded up with meetings lately.